I didn't see one.
Oh, okay.
Page two.
Page two?
First sentence. Or the name and supervisor if he has an estimated cost.
Estimate. Test.
Page your link on the bottom of page three.
Okay.
We have sale, sale of rock at the Lajuns.
Mm-hmm.
In the second sentence, the city attorney stated he has heard that rock in this area is doesn't really hold.
Take out his maybe? Thank you.
One more.
One more?
Yeah, page five.
Okay.
The last paragraph.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know, maybe four sentences says it recommended by the city attorney if the city takes bids on the old poles.
Oh, it was recommended probably.
But it was recommended by the city attorney.
Okay.
Since it says on the old poles, that was disclaimer regarding the use of the old poles.
Oh.
If not to be used.
Are not to be used?
Uh, well, no.
Maybe just restructure for it doesn't sound so choppy.
It sounds like we're saying not to use the disclaimer.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, right, right. As, as used for structural buildings. Uh, let's see.
I have another disclaimer stating that, or I don't know, however you want.
Right, yeah. Like putting an old pole, add a disclaimer stating the pole should not be used, something like that. So where does it look like the disclaimer is a no-no, right?
Right, yeah.
Oh, let's restructure the sentence a little bit better. What was that?
Oh, was it?
No, it's time to read it. It starts from. Okay, what did you say? Okay. Oh, that's interesting.
All right, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the regularly announced first twenty at the minute.
I'll say it. Make a motion in a second. Yep. All those in paper? Any opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, approval of the bills.
Uh, I'll make the motion to approve the bills from June first through June fifteen. Second.
Motion in a second? All those in paper?
Aight.
Any opposed? On the public comment. It's like Miss Jean Heard. You're on list first. Would you like to go first? You have five minutes.
Aight, aight, okay. Since you all, you may not know, but you need to know, you can see I'm filming the meetings last week and I will continue now because the county is also doing, people are filming the events over at the county courthouse. Not just me, but other people because see, a lot of the stuff that goes on don't get recorded and don't get put in minutes. Just like I see here in the minutes now to what I said last week and other people said last week. And I think it's a good idea that you guys start doing the same thing because after all, your newspaper ain't coming here no more and people are asking why do not Lyndon be put in the paper of the minutes and the procedure of the meetings? So, that's why I'm doing this because we have that right. And when you neglect, no matter what is said or what isn't done, it needs to be. Now, I'm gonna back up a little bit because we had three months where we had to be down there at the community building down here at the, down here when we had this virus thing and. And the one issue that I had brought up to Lynn Atkinson and he failed to do his job and so far as I'm concerned, uh, no report was really given. All I heard was a statement from him and nobody else said there was no wrongdoing about with my neighbor. And that's nowhere near further from the truth. Now, what's gonna happen with that is because we're getting involvement with the contractor and others we speak and I also got the information what the city did three years ago when I first moved here and what they did to that sewer. And so it made the cost extra for her when it wasn't necessary. So, I'll just go that much part there because that's, that's totally wrong for residents to have to face that when they don't know the whole story. And when the contractor didn't know that there was a clean out right on the property line, the guy to the west of me. Because you know why? Because this city had took out and tore out the, the clean out which was above ground and put it underground. He didn't know it was there and then the city didn't tell him, okay? So, we'll end with that one there till it gets up to in the heat. But then, out here at the city park. I tell you, it's been remarkable for the last week or two weeks maybe because there hadn't been no activity. Poles, nobody working on nothing until Saturday. They came here and they started working on things out there and people keep asking, 'cause I was out there, 'cause I enjoy the park. Said, "Why are they keep the barricades up?" I said, "Well, they're trying to curb yours, for your safety." But I said, "But you look out there at what happened yesterday and then even today. The barricades are still up and the pool's open." And now some of the people that had come out there before asking, "Why are the barricades still up?" "'Cause the poles are all up and you took and discarded the poles," or they did, "and put them down there on the football field parking lot. Why don't you keep your garbage up here on the city park in your parking lot and not do that to the football field parking lot?" Those people don't think that that's right either and I agree. It looks like a disaster down there in the corner of your remnants and it's sad. And then there's one more incident that happened recently. One of the councilmen here as I speak at his place on Fourth Street set a monster fire the other night. And let me tell you, the more you put brush on it, the higher the flames got, to almost a pole, pole height. And I wasn't the only one that witnessed that. And I think the police did not do the proper job there and especially from a councilman's side, you ought to take more heed about what would you have done if you'd have set that whole tree line on fire? Because it was just at that level, that type of, type of fire. My God. Thank God it didn't do anything, thank goodness, but that there was outrageous. And I had a right to sit on the street and watch what was going on, even though his wife and everybody else yelling at me. I don't have a right on the street. I sure do 'cause the cop came down there and he told me I do have that right on the street 'cause I was on my way home. So, since my time is running out, I'm sure others are here wanting to speak too. So, I wanna let them have, see if they can get on, so I get on with the YouTube, you betcha.
Uh, Toby Young.
Yes, I'd like to go first. I'd like to be last.
All right. Harry Young, would you like to go?
I don't really have anything to say, I'm just here to listen.
All right.
Holly, were you, did you want public comment, Holly?
Yes, I would.
You have five minutes?
Sure. Okay. This all started with the stupid dogs barking. And I came here before and I complained about it. And I even stated the ordinance that talks about it, that addresses it. Nothing has been done. This goes on and on, it's been going on for four long years. I have a notice that the dog barking is one of the trigger noises that affects me and it affects me very quick and very strongly. And I cannot control what it does to me. I'm trying to learn the things that could help me, but that takes a long time. And when the cops do not do their jobs enforcing the city ordinances, then I get the crap from everybody else because I'm reacting to something that I have no control of. And I'm getting tired of the crap. I'm getting tired of getting harassed. Help. He came up to my house, running up on my house the other night. I backed my car in, I didn't even get out of the damn car. And he's up in my face because I honked my horn going by his house. Do you know why I honked his horn? 'Cause his cat was in the middle of the road and I didn't wanna run over it. So, that tells you. They're mad because they're mad and y'all are all in this together. You're, you're, um, partners, you're his son-in-law, she's his wife. How far do you want me to keep going?
Will you pardon your answer?
This needs to stop. It's getting very much out of control.
I'll say it.
Well, it's ridiculous what you are putting me and my kids through.
For the record, I would like to say.
No, that's my five minutes.
All right, sir, what would you do?
You have that right.
When what you guys are putting me and my kids through are utterly ridiculous. And when I call about something and not a damn thing's done. Anybody else calls, the cops are up my ass. I'm fed up. And guess what, people, I ain't going nowhere. I own my land, I own my house. I ain't going nowhere. Done.
I would just like to say for the record, I was not in your face. I didn't get out of my vehicle and I was in the street.
You came up on me, yelling at me.
I was in my vehicle and didn't.
Yelling at me, yelling at me.
I didn't raise my voice, all I did was just do why you honked.
That's another thing, you guys are so good at lying. I can't, you guys don't even know the truth.
Thank you.
You lie so much, you don't even know the truth. Ridiculous. How about me driving by your house and getting yelled at by your wife? I did nothing then.
When was this?
The day after you yelled at me.
That was my daughter.
Well, whoever.
And she's got video of you yelling at her. Greatest recording.
I have got many, way more video, I've got videos, I've got voice recordings of your dog barking all the time. And nothing been done. I've got voice recordings out my ears.
Thank you, Holly, thank you, your five minutes are up.
Well, if you're gonna direct to me, I'll reply.
You have that right too.
Toby, would you like to, uh, use your five minutes?
Yeah, I'd like to use part of them, I guess. I have a problem with this town of somebody going around agitating everybody, trying to make them excited and do things wrong. And soon as I figure out who it is, I'll let you know.
All right. Mary Young?
I'm having a little trouble with, uh, somebody who stands around and yells obscenities all the time. We've got kids in the neighborhood, we have the school up there and it will be starting again and nobody needs to hear the F-bomb thrown out constantly. Um, I think that's an issue.
Then talk to the people who let their dogs bark all the time or talk to the cops who won't do their job.
It's my five minutes.
Well, fine.
Holly, what are your half or five minutes?
Anyway.
Well, don't excuse me and not let me reply.
Are you gonna let me talk now or are you gonna use up my time?
At least be brave enough to say my name.
Holly.
All right, Holly.
Ask Cora Roder.
I'm tired of you sitting out there saying all this, "Fuck and shut up, shut up, goddamn shut up, shut your goddamn dogs up. This has gotta stop, we have kids in the neighborhood, there's a school right up there." Are you gonna do that when the kids are in school?
If the dogs still bark, I will. And that nothing's being done about it, I still will. Because that's the reaction it draws out of me.
And you draw reactions out of other people too.
But you guys judge me and blame me for things that should be blamed on other people. The owners of the dogs, the cops not forcing the ordinances.
Did you not get your five minutes?
You harass me. You ask me a question, I answer it.
No, I didn't ask you a question, I was making comments.
I didn't move on to community much better. How much time is left?
Just two minutes and fifty-five seconds.
Yeah, two minutes and fifty-five seconds. Mary, if you'd like to continue?
No, I, I'm tired of being interrupted, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you everybody for your comments. Moving on to correspondence to council.
There is none. The only thing I have is the annual meeting for public wholesale, twelve plus Wednesday at seven o'clock at their. Aunt Brandon, our representative, should be going to that, so I don't have anything.
All right, moving on to unfinished business. ATV slash UTV information.
I don't know if everybody got a chance to look at those various ordinances. It's considered a variety of ways you could do it if you're inclined to do it. And this is all kind of about, 'cause we got a number of citizens that wanted to see some legalized utility vehicles that are registered to make sure.
Yeah, boy.
Did you read it?
Yeah, that was very, you know, except like it was a good idea getting people to have insurance, prove they have insurance, give them a registration sticker from the city. As long as you have that or a license driver. I mean, I don't know if they necessarily have to have blinkers, so long as you know how to use your signal from your current.
You have to buy, uh, same driving pass for vehicles. About this is what you put through the law, but.
As long as they don't exceed the speed limit.
And it, I think it's due to specify between.
Forty-five for ATVs and twenty-five for golf carts, I think is what they're.
Some of them, some of them, dusted off.
Yeah.
Right at the dark.
Yeah.
I agree with that.
I kinda did a summary of them, of what they all are and what, those are the three things we use over work. They'd all do a registration, they, um, they just all, as it's a regular vehicle, they don't tag it and they just, it's handled by the law, I mean, it's just a vehicle, they follow the same laws. But everybody else, rolling game thirty-six annually, it's a CD twenty-five. Lewis Burke who has a really good program, their, their registration fee and everything is a little bit higher. Um, but then I told you what each one was and then I said yes or no on who has it, who doesn't, and if they specified in their ordinance or not. And then some, on the back page was some of the specifics like Pat Huck got sunrise sunset. Uh, I think one of them had something about if they have seat belts and they're equipped with them, if they should wear the safety restraints.
I think a good idea to have them carry their insurance with them too, because everything runs like, you know. Get the insurance and then cancel it.
So, I guess first we need to decide if we're going to create an ordinance and then maybe go into detail as far as what it needs, how it needs to read and how, as far as costs.
You're right. And then just, I mean, if you give a general idea like that in mind, I mean, you draft something. As a start, it obviously, we're gonna probably have to tweak it some.
Sure.
There's a variety of ways you could do it, there's really no right or wrong. My number one thing is wanting to ensure people in case there, if there's an accident, that there's not gonna be an issue there. And then, um, safety issues, I mean, most of them are common sense. Yeah.
Darryl, what are your thoughts on these vehicles on the streets? You worked here a long time.
I don't think a lot of guys just enforce them.
I understand. David, you have an opinion?
I'm, I'm the same with Darryl.
You think it'd be hindrance, you think it'd be a hassle for our citizens if there were UTVs and ATVs on the street?
Upon the council, I'd say there should be limitations as far as what vehicles are allowed. 'Cause like, if I could start naming vehicles and persons of the community that must be passed it, they're gonna take it to their side.
I can see UTVs and golf carts as far as ATVs goes. I'm, I suppose we have to include them as well.
My only thoughts on the ATVs are, are like those, obviously sturdy example, live in city limits. But the shop's right outside.
I agree.
He might have need to come in or whatever, instead of taking the truck, take his ATV.
Yeah, that's kinda what I see too.
I mean, the bad, you know, these things are green there as far as dates, right, previous councils way back when.
Everybody's worried about being abused, of course. I mean, if people use them for legitimate purposes and operate them safely, I don't see any issues. But then you start getting someone riding an ATV, a gang riding around town all the time.
Somebody on the street.
That's what people get upset with.
Running seventy miles an hour down the freeway.
And that, what I liked about those birds is if it had to be straddled, if it didn't.
Yeah, I did. Yeah, I read that.
Yeah.
Everybody excluded those type of vehicles.
Right, those little pocket rockets.
It is, they, uh, you will get some feedback from farmers on that though, 'cause that's what they're driving.
Right. Well, but excluding is those little, what I call pocket rockets, you have any motorcycle that goes, so you gotta straddle it and they're quick. So, I think that would, I think this should be more for practical use vehicles.
With the state, none of those, those pocket bodies are.
Yeah. Well, the one that Lewis Burke says that you have to straddle it, it's not, it's not any.
But though you have to do that on most.
I was gonna say, can you do it by straddle?
Well, that's true.
UTV, you do not.
Can you do it by weight, nothing, I mean, like the larger ones? Is, can you do it by, how do you buy, I mean, some of these have width, height, what kind of tires, I mean, some of these get pretty detailed.
Yeah, there's so many different manufacturers and style manufacturing. If you're gonna allow ATVs, you're, I mean, you're strictly speed limit is what's gonna be your.
Like motorcycles too.
Yeah, well, true.
They've got their tag and all that, your leg tag.
It's hard to over legislate something like this, 'cause you're not gonna think of it really. Well, I mean, it's, it's, it's almost, 'cause there, there's always pro and con every decision, but, uh, I mean, there's, I know there's legitimate pro and con, but there's gonna be abuses too.
Like anything.
Yeah. True.
It's a good idea.
I'm not against them, but those vehicles being allowed, so long as, like you said, if you're able to use it and you got somebody, like you said, cruising seventy-five miles an hour on the ATV, 'cause it's.
They're subject to the laws, it's like a car is, I mean, I mean, I don't know how much, how fast some of those go, I mean, are they too fast?
Well, this even fits like those razors. And those are like, those things are high, those fit some of these. But if there wasn't gravity, cases to give your ass or.
I personally like to see them off seventy-five highway unless they're crossing.
Crossing only.
Well, but you're running into an issue there.
Trying to get to the other end.
Right. And also the issue, golf carts are rated twenty-five mile an hour. You put it on forty mile an hour zone, it's not working.
Yeah, that's true.
I, I just think you stay off seventy-five highway and crossing. I know that doesn't allow you access to every point in the city, but. I, I just see you stay off so private and crossing, I know that doesn't allow you access to every point in the city, but. I, I don't know, I just don't, I don't think it's a good idea to, you know, those trucks are going through town fast at times and.
Well, you, you ain't talked about the handicap people that need the scooters too. 'Cause when I came here three years ago, I had to have one, so don't take that away from the handicap people in this town. Pardon me?
They're already allowed anyway.
Okay, but you didn't say nothing yet, that's why I brought it up now. And watch it, because they're handicap people.
No, I just, I need some direction from what you guys want.
Well then.
And if you wanna take it until July one and give us some more thought and start writing some stuff out, that's fine, but I need a starting point.
I think you need to start.
'Cause I, I do not have a vote in this city. See what others concur or deny.
I absolutely think that there needs to be some headway in all this.
Yeah.
You want me to draft something?
Yes, sir.
Do you need to make a motion?
I mean, you don't need to make, make a motion, but I'd like, I mean, are you, you like something like, uh, Osage City that opens it up to basically all these types of vehicles? I mean, that type of concept.
I think that the city has a pretty good outline of, of what they, you know, require. So I don't know, you know, if you, the ATV, you know, the strap.
Yeah, I think that's gonna have to do, because that would defeat the purpose of my example from a farmer coming in town. And I already struck that from the, from the.
All the things in the summary are from Osage cities, they have most detailed, one out of the three that I gave. So, all this is pretty much, all this work that's from there is pretty much.
You can like, you know, like, well, Vegas burger is pretty extravagant, but.
Yeah.
And they're much larger city, of course, too.
Right, so you have to look at some other cities, which start getting out of our population scope and maybe we don't need to go as far as they have.
Well, I can put something together, but when I get it together, you guys need to start ripping apart your reports and stuff. There's gonna be different ways you can do it, I mean, there's a lot of different things too, but.
You better be careful.
I can, I can get something started anyway, do so.
That would be cool.
Please.
I think maybe, like the golf cart thing, twenty-five mile an hour, that's different.
I don't think you want any of them going over thirty mile an hour in town.
Well, I mean, they're stuck to the speed limit laws.